I will call the Planning Commission meeting to order. Jenna, would you do the roll call and the declaration of posted places?
Thank you, Chair Muller. We'll start with the roll call. Chair Muller?
Yes, here.
Commissioners Tonda?
Here.
Habib?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Wilson?
Yeah.
Kumar?
Here.
And Downey. I do not see Downey present. I may also declare the posting of the agenda. Tonight's meeting agenda was duly noticed and posted in accordance with Government Code Section 54954.2.
Okay, Commissioner Kumar, can you lead us in the fight? Sue, please. Okay, thank you. Now is the time for public comment. Members of the public are entitled to address the Planning Commission concerning any item within Morgan Hill Planning Commission's subject matter jurisdiction. Public comments are limited to no more than three minutes, except for certain specific exceptions. The commission is prohibited from discussing or taking action on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Jenna, could you please tell people how they can join the meeting?
Thank you, Chair Muller. If you're joining us today using Zoom and wish to provide public comment, you may do so by using the raise hand feature. If you're calling in using your phone, dial star nine and then dial star six. And also send us an email at PCpubliccomment@morganhill.ca.gov. And if you're also in the audience, feel free to come up to the podium. Each speaker will receive three minutes. If you wish to speak on the behalf of someone else, you will receive one additional minute per speaker. If you're speaking on the behalf of four or more people, your comments will be limited to a total of seven minutes. Please make sure to state each person's name for the record. Thank you.
Okay, do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Seeing none, do we have anybody online? Any emails?
Let me check the emails. No emails.
Okay, so I will close the public comment section. And we'll go to the orders of the day. Does anybody have any request to change the orders? Okay, then we'll take the orders the way they stand. The next item is consent calendar. As you remember, we do consent calendars with one motion unless somebody wants to pull one of the items. If nobody wants to pull an item, can I please have a motion?
I'll move to approve consent calendar. Second.
A motion and a second. Jenna, would you call the roll, please?
Chair Muller?
Yes.
Commissioners Tonda?
Hi.
Habib?
Hi.
Downey is absent. Blake?
Hi.
Kumar?
Uh.
And Wilson?
Hi.
Motion passes at six with one absent.
All right. All right, with that, we move on to our first public hearing, which is a to make a recommendation for vehicle miles travel policy for the city to the city council. Adam, are you doing the staff report?
Yes, Adam Haskowski, Principal Planner with the Plan Division. So I just have some opening remarks and then I'm going to turn it over to our consultant TJ KM, who's online today. So as your commission is aware, SB 743 changed the focus of transportation impact analysis in SEQA from measuring impacts to drivers, so how someone was sitting in traffic, to measuring the impact of driving. In 2018, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research recommended that VMT be used to measure transportation impacts under SEQA. And compliance was required in July of 2020, which means that LOS can no longer be cited as a finding of significance in SEQA. And instead of measuring traffic level service, we now measure the amount of driving generated by a project using VMT. As your commission is aware, and as will be stated in the presentation, Morgan Hill has been evaluating VMT on a case-by-case basis since 2020, which requires an EIR and overarching considerations throughout most of Morgan Hill. And as some of the planning commissioners may recall, the city presented VMT policies to the commission back in 2020, recommending that the city establish VMT screening criteria similar to the ones that are being recommended tonight, as well as VMT thresholds that followed OPR's VMT recommendation, which would have stated that we would reduce VMT of new development by approximately 15% using VTA's countywide VMT model. Back in 2020, the Plan Commission then recommended approval of those VMT screens and thresholds. However, the city council directed staff to deviate from that VTA countywide VMT model and/or deviate from OPR's recommendation to reduce VMT by 15%. And then also to revise the proposed screens and the thresholds as necessary. The, as you may not know, the lead agencies have discretion to deviate from OPR's recommendation for reducing VMT by 15% and adopting our own, or relying on thresholds recommended by other agencies. And so and if we do adopt our own VMT policy, we have to provide the decision of a lead agency to adopt the thresholds supported by something called substantial evidence. Substantial evidence means enough relevant information and reasonable references from this information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion, even though other considerations might also be reached. So after that direction from the city council, we had a little bit of a hiatus. The city entered into a new consultant agreement with TJKM Transportation Consultants to provide that substantial evidence that is needed to deviate from OPR's recommendation. And as detailed in the staff report and the attachments, TJKM has has provided the substantial evidence that is needed to deviate from that recommendation. And as TJKM will present in their presentation, the city is recommending that your commission recommend approval to the city council to establish VMT screens and thresholds, thereby making us compliant with SB 743, making our own VMT policy transparent and maintaining local control. And now I'll turn the presentation over to Arthur Chen at TJKM, who's attended virtually today. And will provide more detail about VMT, why we are doing this, why we should care, as well as getting to the specifics of the proposed VMT screens and thresholds.
All right, thank you very much, Adam. Just a couple of tech checks. You guys can hear where you correct, just making sure.
Good.
Okay, and then I will now share the PowerPoint presentation. Click share. Okay, so you guys can see the PowerPoint, I believe. Um, yes. Okay, so this is the Tuesday, June 27, 2023, Morgan Hill VMT methodology and thresholds. A quick summary, as Adam said, SB 743 stipulated that local jurisdictions excuse me. Oh, never mind. Local jurisdictions pass a VMT thresholds and then to use VMT as a SEQA impact rather than LOS. The implementation deadline was back in July of 2020, but the local jurisdictions have the way in terms of the timeline of when to adopt the VMT thresholds. VMT is basically vehicle miles traveled. So vehicle miles traveled is used as an input by SEQA to calculate air quality and greenhouse gas emissions. Typically calculated using travel demand models that estimate VMT by multiplying the traffic volume with distance travel models such as the VTA model, calculate VMT by city, county, and by region. And this small table on the side show that VMT is multiplied. So you have one vehicle traveling 10 miles, you have 10 VMT. 10 vehicles having one mile is also 10 VMT, and likewise, four times 10 is 40 VMT. And why does this matter? The purpose of this VMT methodology is to maintain a consistent threshold for the city of Morgan Hill. So that rather than having a project apply for VMT exemption or VMT mitigation, by setting this threshold, Morgan Hill can thereby be compliant with SB 743, consistent with this VMT policy, and we have a transparent policy that developers and residents can refer to. It removes barriers for infill development, and it also maintains local control on how VMT implementation is done within the city. So currently, if we follow the OPR guidelines, which is the 15% reduction of VMT within the city of Morgan Hill, as you can see from the two maps here, one is showing VMT per capita, which is by resident and a VMT per employee. Most of the city on the employment side gets covered in red. So any development that goes into these red areas would have to show that their VMT is reduced, can be reduced to a certain point, and thereby going through an EIR process or a SEQA determination. As you can see, both of these maps show more than half of the city area being within VMT non-compliance. So that way we're setting new thresholds to allow for more development within the city. So in coordination with the city, TJKM obtained the VTA model, extracted data for the city of Morgan Hill. And then for the 2015 base year from the VTA model, the home-based VMT per resident is about 25, 24.64. And likewise, VMT per employee within the city is 21.42. We analyzed around 34 travel analysis zones. And then, so far, by setting the threshold, as the average mentioned before, about 370% plus of the TASZs within Morgan Hill meets the threshold for VMT per capita. And about 40% of TASZs within Morgan Hill meets the threshold for VMT per employee. And then, in addition to setting the threshold level, we also set screening criteria. This is basically projects that fall within the screen criteria are exempt from VMT analysis. So for example, small projects, those was 110 average daily trips. Local serving retailers such as size of an average safer supermarket are assumed to have local traffic and thereby not increase the VMT within an area. Low VMT area screen for projects located within areas that have already low VMT in this existing condition will be exempt from a VMT will be exempt from VMT study. And then transit proximity of this half a mile away from a major transit stop, which is the Caltrans station along with the VTA high-capacity bus line that travels back to San Jose. And also affordable housing screening residential projects, 100% affordable housing are screened out along with active transportation projects for transit, bicycle, and pedestrian facilities. So like I mentioned before, on the left is the map using the OPR guidelines. And on the right is the new Morgan Hill threshold map. We've drawn in the dotted lines for the transit where you could screen out projects using the transit buffer area, half a mile from transit. And then now most of the map is green because the average VMT is used rather than the 85% threshold. And likewise, for commercial employment type projects, on the left is the VMT per employee using OPR guidelines. And on the right is the new VMT per employee Morgan Hill threshold setting. And now you can see that bigger area of the city is now under the thresholds, and this is much easier to get development to go through for VMT purposes. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let's ask clarifying questions, at least at this point. Commissioner Habib?
Yeah, actually, I just had one clarifying question, and this was on slide four. It was mentioned that, was it four? Yeah, it was slide four. I mentioned at one of the bullet points, the purpose of VMT is to remove barriers for infill development. Can you please help me understand how that helps infill development?
Right. So for example, let me go to the two map slides. So for example, previously using the OPR guidelines, the analysis zones in yellow and red are basically they have to go through a VMT study and VMT analysis. And with the new Morgan Hill thresholds, a lot of the TASZs are now under the VMT average for the city. So thereby, projects located within these green zones do not have to go through a VMT analysis and thereby encouraging more infill development in the center of the city in these green zones. And this is for residential projects, and then this maps for commercial/employment type projects.
All right, thank you. I sit for now.
Commissioner Kumar?
And I would like to clarify quickly that projects may be exempt from SEQA in general. And so that VMT would not apply at all, screenings, thresholds, analysis, anything. But projects that would fall under this new policy would still have to do SEQA. They just wouldn't necessarily have to do the VMT analysis that goes with it. Unless it's a housing project that's exempt from SEQA per state law.
I have quite a few questions. I use as a measure on these types of things. My understanding is if I could explain it to somebody else like my wife. And I actually still cannot. So maybe in the beginning, could you go back a couple of slides? There was a chart that showed the VMT per resident or VMT per employee. I think it was.
Oh, yes, this one.
There you go, that one right there. So just as a beginning, home-based VMT per resident, home-based vehicle miles traveled per resident, 24.6. Now, what is that? What does the 24.6 mean?
So basically, it's calculated using the travel demand model. It takes into account all the travel analysis zones within the city, the 34 zones that comprise of the city. And it takes into all the production trips. So the the average distance of all the trips taken by all the residents within the city divided by the population. So any trips exiting out of a residence. So you take trips, you exit a home, you travel to work, you travel to shopping, and you come back home. So the model takes into the total distance traveled by every resident within the city, multiplied by the distance traveled, and then divided by the total population. And that's the per capita.
Is that the 24.6? Is that the VMT? A day?
Yes, it's a day, weekday, yeah, per average weekday.
Okay, 24.6 miles per day per capita. And it's per capita. So if a household has three people and one of those individuals is five years old, you still apply that to that individual, even though it's ridiculous they don't drive.
Right, because it takes into the aggregate average of all the residents within the city. So some residents travel a lot further and some residents travel a lot less. Like you said, the kids and people under the age of 18, the model takes into account that they mostly will go to school or they will not travel that far. But then for residents over the age of 18, they go to work, for example, in further out towards San Jose or towards high employment areas. And this, Morgan Hill is, I believe, more of a residential suburb rather than attraction/employment generator. People travel further to get their jobs.
So think of it as for every five-year-old, there's someone who's driving 100 miles a day or more.
And that's what that really is saying. That for 41,000 individuals in Morgan Hill, many of whom are children or under 18 or old and therefore aren't driving either, that all of them are considered. When we talk about 24.6 miles per person, Liam, you go a couple hundred miles in a day on the average, and somebody else would be zero. Okay, that's what that means.
But it also does one other thing.
Okay.
Doesn't it also exempt a trip where you go two or three places other than the home? So it takes every trip and starts it at the home and goes to the destination, then takes you back to them, then it goes that way. So if you go to one store or you go to a school, then you go to the gym, and then you go to the store, and then you go home. It really goes to the home in between there. So it adds miles.
That's right. No, that's how the model calculates the VMT per, home-based VMT per resident. It takes into account of all the trip ends that a resident may travel, even if some of them do not end or start. That's why the values are high, relatively high.
Right. Okay, this isn't your typical P&amp;E then type single production and attraction?
Excuse me, sorry, I didn't catch the first word.
Is not a typical P&amp;A.
This is a typical, it's a typical four-step production attraction model, the VTA model.
But I'm saying that on the next column, we're talking about employees, 21.4 miles traveled for all the employees that we have in the city of Morgan Hill. The attractions, excuse me, are 21.6. You don't add the two up. One is a production and one is an attraction. That's what home-based means. And home-based employees are, maybe I'm getting, maybe I'm too confused. I used to do this long time ago, like 40 years ago, and so maybe the terminology has changed. If I'm trying to explain home-based VMT per employee, that we take 41, we take our employment base, let's say it's 20,000, 20,000 people who are employed in Morgan Hill, times 21, and that will give me the number of trips per employee. I mean, total trips.
If you take the 20,000 employees within the city of Morgan Hill, multiply by the 21.42 vehicle miles traveled per employee, you get the you get the total distance traveled, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, so you do that, and you do that on the resident's side, aren't in some cases you double counting? I mean, you know, a person who works here in Morgan Hill, starts her trip from home and ends up at City Hall. So do you, does this model then account for that trip in two ways, home-based and also home-based resident and home-based employee?
So if I can jump in, I believe the home-based VMT per employee, that's the amount of vehicle miles traveled for a job that's within Morgan Hill. So for any job that's in Morgan Hill, someone's driving on average 21 miles to get to that job. Either someone that lives locally within Morgan Hill, and then also when you average that with someone who lives further away, either lower north in San Jose or down in Monterey County, if they drive to Morgan Hill, that's where that cap, that VMT is captured in that 21.42.
I think I need to leave this question because I don't think any amount of your explanation will clarify it for me. But I do have a little bit better inkling of what the 24.6 means for the base year 2015. So that's the number of miles traveled that's calculated by a model for every resident who lives in Morgan Hill. That's what Morgan Hill adds to the climate change and air pollution, et cetera. So is that then equal to our base? Is, you know, when we talk about how we change from the bases, is that our base to year 2015? In fact, it is. So the base year?
Right, that's the base year for the VTA model is 2015. That's correct.
Wouldn't we presume that anytime we add residents, anytime we add jobs, we're going to deviate from the base, we're going to increase from the base? Okay, and when you increase from the base, does that automatically trigger then the requirement in SEQA to do an analysis? Except for the smaller projects, except those that are exempted?
It would not, because our policy would be that if the policy is adopted, that we are not going to require a 15% reduction. So even if it continues to go up and we'd be responsible for reducing it, the city is not going to be reducing by 15%. That is the city's ability to choose not to, based on the OPR recommendation is the, is a reduction at 15%. And if you look at especially the home-based, how in the world would you do that? Given where we are, the average home number of miles that a resident's driving, you simply can't. Employees within the city getting to work, there might be ways to mitigate, but they're not realistic. We don't have a major internal transit system. We can't be handing out bikes to everybody and expect them to use them for work, you know, those types of things that would reduce the actual vehicle miles traveled by car.
Well, you know, actually, not by design, but by chance, we did decrease it. As a result of COVID, the VMT in the Bay Area decreased.
Oh, absolutely.
And, okay, it can be done, but you would have to change the behavior of people from how they had to work, from how they do shopping, how they do, et cetera. Okay, so now we're saying that we have a base year VMT in 2015. It's just intuitively setting aside COVID or something like that. Anytime we add residents, we're going to increase then the total VMT. Okay, is this the VMT per resident or the total VMT?
VMT per resident is the standard.
Per resident.
Or doing the two home-based ones that they just do, the resident one and the job one.
Well, then I don't understand this at all. If all we have to do is not deviate for the 24.6 per resident, then maybe that's an easy thing to do because we could add a lot more people. But if they don't exceed 24.6 per person, we're good. Is that what we're saying?
No, I noticed the forecast, and I can't read that from this far.
25 points.
It goes up. And so as, if we're building more jobs within the city, there's an opportunity, if we have the housing and jobs and it's balanced, the forecast could go down. But what we would need to be able to do under OPR's rule is knock down all of that by 15%. And given where we're located, it is simply not possible.
And with our infrastructure, it's not possible. So what, to summarize it, what we're basically doing is instead of trying to decrease it by 15%, we're trying to hold to the 2015 base.
Okay, per person.
For person, using those two metrics.
I got you.
Okay.
Okay. And then when we talk about we're supposed to decrease by 15%.
No, 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 under the law, that was a recommendation. It's not in the statute or anything. It's under the law. It's a guideline. The law says we have the ability to set our own as long as we have the data. And we're choosing to say, in Morgan Hill, with the lack of mass transit that we have and the number of jobs we have, we're saying the best we can do over this period is to maintain what we have.
Okay, and those are the, the dozen cities that have been cited in the report all did it that way and all have standard the scrutiny of the state.
Correct.
Office of Public.
It's one of the few places where local control is still in that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that, well, first of all, that we're talking about a unit, number of VMT per question, not the total VMT.
Right.
I understand that because that part I didn't understand. How in the world do you ever decrease VMT when you increase the number of people? Okay, so now getting into the, I forgot what you call them, criteria or so?
The screening criteria?
The screening criteria. Okay, and I, the consultant was able to provide, here are possible exceptions. There you go. The first one, that the project size, that's fewer than 110 average daily trips. Oh, okay, we're not talking about VMT. We're talking about ADT here.
No.
Yeah, this is using the ITE manual.
Right.
Okay, 100, okay, these are per day, because you have about 10 trips per household, single-family dwelling units. So after 12 households, it would exceed that. Okay, so very small projects would be exempted, 10 units or less.
Correct.
Okay, and it only has to meet one of those, not all six or seven of them.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then let's see. The low VMT area screening. Okay, I don't, could you explain that again? What is meant by low VMT screening?
Right, so the threshold setting, which we mentioned before, that 24.64 value, you can see on the map on the right. Uh, you can see on the map on the right, all the green areas. Uh, these zones already have V M T either at or lower than twenty four point four six four. So every project that is slated to go in into these green zones in the map on the right. Will be exempt from uh V M T analysis, because they're located within a low V M T area. As defined by Morgan Hill's thresholds. And.
You know, this is the map that we had seen a while back, which got several of us asking, how come if you live left. Of Route one oh one. You travel more than the route to the left in green. And can you explain that, setting aside, this is what the model says, the model only says what we input into it? Uh, so what is the rationale that uh uh jobs and residents to the right? To the east of one oh one. Uh, are supposedly have greater V M T per capita?
Right, so the way the model works for calculating uh this value, so we'll take V M T per capita. As an example, the low lying areas near one oh one within the city. Uh, are mostly, the land use inputs are denser, so there's more residents, more jobs located within. Um, the green parts of Morgan Hill, compared to the eastern portion, which is a bit more rural. And then so the model will take into account um the trip length and the trip distances traveled. And then normally, if you're living within a more rural area, you'll travel further to get to basic jobs and services compared to. Uh, if you live in the low line, more dense areas within the city, other trip distances are shorter, and thereby. The V M T per capita will be less.
Okay, I. Uh, I understood what you said, it just intuitively, that doesn't.
The the majority of employment centers and retail business is on the west side of one oh one. So the only way you could reduce V M T if you live on the east side is you're only shopping at Target. You're only, you know, you shop at Cock and Commons, you never really go over the freeway, and our travel patterns here. Most folks do venture, they do the loop through town for services, to purchase items, for employment. Um, a number of different things, so.
The thing is farther away for the east side of one oh one.
Well, you know, you have the commercial that uh, I I forgot what we call it off of Cocking. That's where most, many of the people who live on the, I got the directions, they said by in the red part, in the east side, that's where they go. And I live on the west side, and that's where I go, so I actually travel further than somebody who lives on the red side. Um, I just mentioned that, and and i- it's still the, the thing is, it's just. I don't know, it just doesn't seem right that if you live on the. Uh, east side of Morgan Hill, or you have land over there, it's very likely you're gonna have to go through the V M T process, then if your property. Uh, is or on the west side. And it still gets back to the model. And again, since I I worked on these, I know how that works, it it'll it'll do what you, the input that you provide to it. Um. So.
I live on the east side and I have to go to the west side every day.
Mm hmm.
For Safeway. Or Trader Joe's or Walmart. Just to get food.
Okay, but that's actually not that far away from uh one oh one, Trader Joe's, Safeways.
Yeah, but as long as I'm crossing that freeway, I'm going from the red zone to the green zone.
Yeah.
But I have to do that, because there's no grocery store on the east side, and most people are making trips to get food.
So, i- if we were accepting everything that's said here, one strategy that we would really have is to promote. Uh, a significant grocery store to the east of one oh one. But that people don't. Okay, such as the uh area that is underutilized right now, right off of Cocking to the north. Um, where grocery store be kind of, we have a lot of room. It is, and and again, is that the type of strategy that if you do that? Um, we could then take a look at recalculating the model for non based trips, you now have a lane used over there?
I- in the future, that certainly could be possible, and our economic development team is here, um, who could. Speak to the the desire to attract that type of use on that side of town. This is also using the V M T model that we're required to have. Um, and that model itself is going through updates and evolution, and we may see different things, but the. The policy itself is whatever V M T we're generating. We have screening, we have thresholds, and while the maps may change, the screening will stay the same, and. Most folks. I I I would say not most, a large number of the employees or the residents who work north. Live on the east side, so even if we have shopping, even if we have more services, there will still be that. Per capita movement north every day, which adds hundreds of miles that balances out those. Folks who may only be going to the grocery store or another service like at DePaul. Um, so it 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 may change slightly over time, but I don't think it would be as significant, it wouldn't turn green. Might might turn yellow one day, but I don't believe it would turn green.
Okay, and that's something that as we change the lane use, we'd be inputting it, and we could request the uh. V T A to rerun the model to reflect the land use.
Well, I think V T A may have a new model.
Right, V T A is working on revising the model, and in the future, they would keep on doing that. You know, as you mentioned, as land use changes, or as cities um throughout Santa Clara County develop more, or land uses changes. The model will change, our policy is a text document, um, it's attachment A to the resolution. And so you can look at the maps as basically a snapshot of today. Our policy is text, uh, just as on this slide for the V N T schooling criteria, with thresholds is also a text document. Um, and the maps are just a visual for us to use for now, and as Jennifer mentioned, that. Over time, it gradually will change.
Um, a a last question that I have. Uh. If, can the city request uh V T A to run a model based on a lane use option that it wishes to? Uh, analyze? Uh, another is this, if um, and we did this in Santa Day, uh, many, many, many years ago in the seventies, and that was. Everybody, it was believed, uh, who lived in Santa Day commuted to the north. And so the thought was, well, this was in G P seventy five, why don't we instead? Put land use that had employment uh uh associated with it in San Jose to the south. And then we would have sort of a reverse commute, and we'd balance things out, and we did it. And uh, the first model, set of models, and I was running the model, uh, showed that, it showed how previously. Uh, based on the land use uh in the early seventies, we've had this immense flow to the north. And then after we ran the model, we had still immense flows, but now we had them balanced, north and south, we got everything congested. And that really ended up uh leading the planning staff. To lead the zoning changes in Evergreen area and some other areas, Eatonville. And the idea was, we'll keep people here, and so the obvious thing would be, and Morgan Hill is pointing this out before. You know, how about everybody support us in uh promoting job growth in Morgan Hill? And now we have a real reason, and that would be, no, no, it's not our tax base, we're really looking at the climate. The model will show that if you had a lot more employment here, and you had a commercial here, especially in the in the red zones. That we would really address some V M T issues, some greenhouse gas issues in a significant way. Necessarily provide more transit, provide those things that keep people closer to home. And so let's say, you know, we wanted to to do that, and we ask um V M T. To, okay, here's just an optional set of land uses that maybe would ultimately be provided as input and do a G P update. And have V T uh V T A do it, and you know, along with it, the idea would be to gain uh non Morgan Hill support. Promoting that type of job base in Morgan Hill.
So looking at that, there the V T A, there is, there would be a cost to V T A that we would have to pay. It's a, and doing something what you're saying is more of a general plan update. And so when we get to that stage, we would, that's when we would take a look at that, when we want to update our general plan. Uh, and that'd be the more appropriate time.
We have actively promoted job creation in the city, we have an economic blueprint. Um, and there is a focus on those land uses that will generate jobs. Um, Matt Mayhood, I can own development directors here, um, if you have specific questions about that, um, but like. Adam said, um, it really is a general plan function, um, when we do get to that land use update. Um, and look at those types of changes in the city.
Hey, you're right, I I I took too much time, sorry.
Well, no, I think we just want to stay focused on the criteria, and not necessarily how we'll use the tools when we get to. Higher level, because what we're trying to solve right now is to reduce the number of projects. That will need a full E I R and overriding considerations.
Gotcha. That it? For now, okay.
Uh, you're good?
I just have one question, Wayne. Um, on the methodology, so is the goal to make it? I wouldn't say easier, but more efficient to approve projects or to mitigate traffic impacts? Or both?
So it's not for traffic impacts, uh, so this is for V M T for basically greenhouse gases. Okay, so it's uh, it's stated that. Um, because in the statute, there is no magic number, there's no fifteen percent reduction, what the statute says, you can take what it is. However, the state O P R's office came up with a recommendation that. Overall, throughout the entire state, the fifteen percent reduction is ideal, but it's up to each agency or lead agency.
It's more of a goal?
Right, it's.
Absolute?
Yeah, for now. Um, it is important to note that. Our L O S analysis that's required for general plan consistency is still a requirement if you meet the criteria. Over a hundred peak hour trips, um, another, there's other criteria in that policy, um. So the screens and the thresholds don't necessarily remove that requirement, but it's not a sequel requirement. And sequel will still have to happen, it just won't necessarily be a detailed V M T analysis that. Might require a significant um overlaying considerations.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Adam, I got a couple. Uh, and I'm gonna move a little bit towards the mitigation area. Except there's something about one that's in uh transit proximity, and it says existing or planned. Who's planned and how is it approved?
So that would be V T A. And we're going to put the correlation with V T A if uh, if there's a significant project where we think that we need to move that. That a bus stop or or that transit stop. So we, as the city, we need to work in conjunction with V T A and get V T A buy off.
So if V T A had a a bus stop planned, and our quarter qualifies as a um high quality. Transit stop, or that bus stop qualifies as a major transit stop, you know, we would be able to count that for this purpose. The bus stop wouldn't necessarily have to go in. Right now, but it is planned, and V T A would have to, we'd have to have some surety that it was actually gonna happen.
Well, yeah, they would have, they would be willing to put a bus stop there, and the applicant could build the bus stop.
Right, for it to be qualified as the planned major transit stop.
Okay, okay, the other one has to do with. It refers to an eighty percent of area median, and a sentence later, it refers to regional median income. I hope we're talking about Morgan Hill median income. And not something that's diluted or changed by. All of Santa Clara County, or that it's in the third mitigation measure, I believe. Of the whole list of fifteen.
Yes, so it would be. Uh, it'll be what's applicable to Morgan Hill.
It's not the way it reads.
Right, the way how this is, uh, all of these are taken uh from the. V M T tool that was generated by V T A, which is in use for all cities as well as the county, so all Santa Clara County. And so we took these, we, there's a lot more than what's listed on this, however, these are the ones that could be applied to Morgan Hill. And so there's a couple where we changed a little bit to be more reflective of Morgan Hill. Um, other ones that we took away was requirements like for uh parking meters, requiring uh someone to chart for parking.
Yeah, but shouldn't that one be tailored, so it's more clear we're talking about Morgan Hill?
Not necessarily, because we use the regional or the county median income numbers to guide our B M R program. So those.
When I see regional, I'm not thinking Santa Clara County, I'm thinking the nine bay area.
Yeah. I think we may need to change that to county.
Yeah. Uh, there's also some that have limits, that say you have to be within a certain portion of the project, right? To make them work. And that's all built into it, we'll have to use, use, where it refers to a distance. And some imply that you would build something else around it, there's implications in these mitigation measures. We may have to do something around it, or we would do something around it to make it work. And that's what concerned me.
Right, and so these mitigation measures will be a menu of options that a development project um could select from. Uh, as we do either initial study or an E I R, so this is a list of things that. We as staff and uh, if we have consultants working on the project, will look through uh the tra- transportation consultant who's working on the V M T. Analysis for a specific project, would look through these and see which ones would apply or is feasible for that type of project.
And as with the model, V T A is also working on an update to these mitigation measures to look for additional. Effective ways that will help um develop more county centric tools. But hopefully, some of those will apply to Morgan Hill, um, a lot of this isn't necessarily. Um, these mitigations don't work here because of the lack of transit.
Yeah, and and some implications, so I guess I'm a little concerned. That where we can, we ought to make real clear that they're tailored to Morgan Hill, right, we're talking Morgan Hill numbers are, in one case, Santa Clara County numbers. Right, because they're worded like they came off a general list, right? Okay, I think I'm done. Are we ready for public comment? Okay, uh, Jen, before I open the public comment period, would you uh tell people how they can join in?
Thank you, Chandler, if you're joining us today using Zoom, I wish to provide pub- public comment, you can use the raise hand feature. If you're calling and using your phone, dial star nine and then dial star six to speak. And also send us an email at P C public comment at Morgan Hill dot C A dot gov.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to public comment, uh, first, do we have anybody here who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go to uh people calling in or zooming in.
We have Joe.
Okay.
Joe on Zoom?
Hey, good evening, this is Joe Baronowski, yeah, you know, the big picture logic of this makes my head spin. Um, so we know in in Morgan Hill, um, we're racing ahead. Uh, far racing ahead about what was planned. Um. For building in in the twenty thirty five general plan, and yet we know that the roadway infrastructure. Uh, twenty four projects that were identified are far behind, so we need. Uh, hands, I would say hundreds of millions of dollars that we don't have, and um, we should be looking for every. Single possible getting one person off of the street. And one of the reasons for the V M T was to increase the the use. And 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 new forms of multimodal transportation. And the Jennifer, you say we can't get everyone to ride a bike to work. Okay, of course not, do you know how many cities actually have? You know, e-bikes and scooter programs? So the OPR is fifteen percent, we can't do fifty percent, so we go to zero? And, and, and the commissioner was right, the, the main rea- the main. Uh, result of this program will be to approve projects that otherwise. Would at least have to do a fair share contribution that could go to something. I mean, like, if you're telling me that you know, sitting there today, that there's nothing we can do. To, um, get people, uh, on some type of, of, of transportation other than their car. I mean, I hope we have more vision than that. At, and, and those dollars that, so we, we have more housing, we're, we're at like already three hundred percent. Of our arena allocation, we're not even halfway into an eight year cycle. So why are we, um, ignoring the fact that? We need every single car off the road that we can and the same time, we don't need more housing, we need less housing. Actually, the people who ran it for elections this year and won also they wanted to limit growth and here we are saying. Well, we're going to make it easier for you, you don't even have to do VMT and so like crosswinds that just had to do a. Uh, a mitigation contribution that can be somehow to get a few people off the road. And we're going to say, nope, can't, no, we can't do fifteen percent, let's go to zero. Uh, I mean. It, it's, it's head scratching, it just makes no sense to me whatsoever. Uh, those are my comments, thanks.
Uh, do we have anybody else?
Joe, Claire, yeah?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Community Development Director Carmen. Joe Guerra from Brookfield's Property Development. We're the developers of the Rosewood Mixed Use Project, currently building a hundred and twenty homes. And attempting to move forward on the approved medical hospital campus. On Juan Hernandez at the teno- tenant and one on one interchange. Um, I have to comment, Commissioner Tonda, I'm having deja vu all over again, being at a public hearing discussing transportation with you. Um, we may have been doing this exact dance twenty five years ago in San Jose. Um, for purposes of tonight's hearing, I actually rise to strongly encourage the commission. Excuse me, to adopt a policy that's based on Morgan Hill's reality and not the VTA model, which uses Bay Area wide data. And the reasons are that the VTA model will always force overriding consideration. On virtually every job creating or service providing land use application. Because it would be impossible for projects in Morgan Hill to ever provide enough mitigation to meet. The VTA VMT threshold because it's so, the vehicle mile travel. Bay Area number is so far away from the standard baseline in Morgan Hill. Um, the VTA model. Really incentivize projects to happen in cities like Sunnyvale and Santa Clara that are already job rich cities. And as you know, Morgan Hill has a very negative job housing balance right now. That impacts your general fund, it backs the ability to provide city services and forces longer commutes for residents and jobs. So the VTA model actually. In the world of a developer trying to decide where to put things. Would you'd be more inclined to put things closer to where the existing jobs are? As opposed to people that need those jobs and services like Morgan Hill. Um, using a Morgan Hill based model that's being recommended today. Um, will get you out of the forced overriding consideration vote for any. And all job or land or, uh, service creating land uses. It, it's even going to create a situation and will, help me with the logic on this one, but the VMT model would suggest. That if you built medical services in Morgan Hill. It actually can't meet. You know, makes things worse, even though we all know that any medical services that provide in Morgan Hill reduces people's driving. To get to San Jose for those same services. I hope you move this proposal forward tonight, um, expeditiously to the council with a recommendation to approve. I thank you for listening to my comments and I appreciate your commitment to serious policy discussions such as this facing Morgan Hill.
Hey. Do we have another speaker?
I don't see any more raised hands.
How about emails?
There are no emails.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing. Okay, now. We had a fairly lengthy clarifying question comment, so why don't we go around the room and see where everybody's at? Commissioner Habib.
Um. I'm still form, uh, formulating some of my comments, um, I'll be passing on to the next commissioner.
Okay, Commissioner Huo.
I think, um. We've talked about this before, how incredibly frustrating this metric is because it's kind of like this. Doesn't apply to Morgan Hill, it's more for the big city. Um. But. Because of compliance with state law, now this is what we're going to have to do. So. All right.
But I think this is also a step forward to where we're at right now.
Yeah, I just, it just. How do we bring transit to Morgan Hill? To end jobs to Morgan Hill, and that's the only way that we're going to be able to. Lower this VMT, you know, I, I just. The logic behind it doesn't make sense to me, um, I think there's other ways of doing this, but. You know, what the, what that would be, I don't know, but I, it's. It's a little mind boggling to me, honestly. But, um, you know, and then you have the need for the, you know, we're going to have electric vehicles. So where does that fall into these calculations? Um, you're not considering. Idling times of cars, you know, uh, at the stoplight, doesn't that add more to the greenhouse gases? Than just having a steady drive, you know, without the traffic? Um, there's just a lot of factors that. I think are being applied here that don't apply to small cities like us, um. As far as the fifteen percent. Understand where Mr. Baronowski, you know, that frustration of why aren't we trying to? To look to get to that, but again. How do we do that if we don't have jobs here and if we don't have transit here? So.
Commissioner Tonda?
Okay, I appreciate this, uh, uh, item, I have a much better understanding of what this VMT is about and what its purpose is. Uh, I don't necessarily agree with the details, but that's, that doesn't really matter. Um, a thing that came up during the discussion was out of the twenty one mitigation measures. That, uh, all projects who are required to, uh, look at some type of mitigation. Given the criteria that we have. Out of the twenty one. Um, I see how, and I see the description from TDM activities through, uh, bike improvements to bike facilities, et cetera, et cetera. Uh. And, uh, what, uh, Joe had said in, under public comment, uh, resonated with me, and that is. So why don't we have a mitigation? Program where a developer in, and this is on my interpretation. A developer, a, a project, uh, falls in this thing, they have to provide some kind of mitigation, and so you're kind of looking at which one do they pursue? Well, what about if there was a mitigation program where X number of dollars would go into the mitigation? We look at all the dollars and then figure out what we want to do with it, uh, either at the beginning of the year. Or sometime, and maybe we get a TDM, we pay for a TDM official. Whose job it is, is to do TDM type of activities. Uh, citywide, not just that development or money goes into. Uh, contribution toward a network improvement, which we need a bunch of money to make that network improvement. What about that, uh, if rather than picking and choosing something that is trying to fit something. That is, you know, sort of, uh, a round peg into a square hole. You just contribute for, uh, the cli- climate change mitigation. Can you do that? Uh, if you could, you know, would we want to provide that option? Oops.
Are you asking a question or?
Yeah. Yeah, uh, does that make any, oh, it may or may not make sense, but could you do that legally?
I don't understand what you're asking, and, and our city engineer would probably love that idea of having a fee collected. Um, but I think it'd be very difficult to implement because generally when we collect fees, we have to have a program already in place, the fee is going to be applied to. And if we're using it as mitigation for an environmental impact, the fee would have to be demonstrated to actually address that impact to the environment. So I think, um, in the, in the very general sense that you're describing, it would be a very challenging template, but maybe further down the road when we have something. More, more specific that we are looking to implement that we could collect a fee for that.
And actually, I was going to say, I think when you get down to the deeper ones on the list. There are some problematic, type mitigations there that are talking about programs that I think are difficult to do now. But at some point in the future, we might be able to do it. Because that was sort of what I was wondering about too. But some of the distances.
Correct.
Related to the projects. I didn't see how that would work because they sort of tie it to have a real nexus to the project. Right? And, and that, to me, I'm not sure how that's going to work here yet, but I think this is a step forward.
It, it would be, Joe, i- if you take a look at, uh, some of these items on here, which we often just say, you do some TDM stuff. Well, if you have a development of, uh, you know, twenty units, you just, you really can't do that. You can't set up a program and promote it to just the twenty people there. If you had two hundred units, that would be different. It's an order of magnitude, and so this last one. Voluntary travel behavior change program, provide a program that targets individual attitude. Uh, regarding travel and, you know, provide them with the information and promote things. That needs to be done citywide. Or it could be most efficiently done. Citywide, and so, uh, one project isn't going to fund that, it would be a combination of all the projects that would fund that activity. And therefore, you know, it would be again, a collection of monies. To be used, if you wanted this program, you design it for this program. And you pay so much and that's where the money is going to go. And you, you target that and that, uh, twenty unit development would benefit proportionally. With to the, to the rest of the city.
But I think incrementally going from the county model right now. That basically forces us into putting up barriers for development here. This is better.
Yeah.
To work the details to do some of the things that we're, we're talking about right at this minute is a next step.
Right, this is along the line of steps, it would be, how do you make this occur in a meaningful way? Cause you cannot, if we're shooting developments, TDM coordinator is, that's ridiculous, they, they can't afford it. Or a behavioral intervention specialist, I suppose, maybe even a van pool. If you had a, 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 a big enough reservoir, uh, you then maybe can't talk about a van pool system.
But for tonight.
It's a matter of time.
Tonight, I think we, this is taking a next step. To put it, all I'm saying is, is, is we're going from a model that really puts barriers up here to one that will reduce the barriers. And not necessarily eliminate them all, but it would reduce them. We're going to the next step, let's get some experience here before we start. Trying to work it out, and I think tho- those kind of things could be even worked out without going into this criteria.
The, the policy doesn't set the mitigation measures, it's a suggested list. Of measures that we could do based on VTA. I think there's a lot of work that will be done as part of our transportation master plan work. Um, there's already discussions around contributions to Mogo. And how to make that sort of an endowment of sorts for the future so it can keep running. Um, and how do we best do that for our local access? And I, it's a great suggestion, I just know it would need a nexus and a study and. There'd have to be a lot involved in that, and I think it would be difficult, but, um, the next step. Would be to look at all these possible mitigations.
And, and you know, what Joe was saying, I, I think you're, you're very correct, Joe, what we're dealing with here and now today is, uh. The VMT policy, uh, that we'll be using. But I, I would disagree in that the purpose of that is to allow more development to occur. I think what we're doing is trying to figure out how the new development that does occur. Adds in a substantive way to the, uh, reduction of unnecessary VMTs and pollution therefore, uh, of earth.
I, I would agree that this policy does not just allow development to happen. It. Reduces the need for a particular VMT study. They still have to go through the process, they still have to meet the development criteria, they still have to do SEQA. Um, unless they're exempt for some reason, and housing. Whether you think it's great or not, is one of those elements that is exempt from SEQA, depending on what law they use to apply. And so we need to be prepared for that, so having these things, um, mitigations and other things is great. But not everything's going to necessarily have to do that type of work. And that's something we need to be ready for regardless, uh, and, and I. I will argue that this policy doesn't make development happen faster, it doesn't make it, um. It, the development's going to happen. I think we just need to be clear, it's going to happen, just what is the process by which it's going to happen? I think is a better way to say it.
Now, can I ask, I want to ask the consultant one question. The part where they're over. The average vehicle mile travel for a resident or employee. You know, this policy and the mitigation measures allow them to mitigate it.
So anything in the red. Still needs to go through a full VMT analysis as part of their SEQA, unless they're exempt for some reason. Uh, those mitigations. Well, let's, let's take a step back, the projects that you've seen already. That have significant overriding considerations as part of the EIR that they're required to do.
Right.
They still have to try and mitigate it best they can. And so those mitigation measures are ideas by which they can use. To try and mitigate, but any mitigation is not going to take them down. Below that threshold enough to not have a significant findings, the, the significant override. That's what I call it, I always should shorten it down, but that's not the correct term, it's.
Okay, so the red is still the red from the old map, it's unmitigatable.
Correct.
Right.
You were still required to apply those, to apply mitigations. As much as you possibly can, even though it's unmitigatable. So that's why you've seen Cockman Commons had that discussion about bus passes. Or contributions to Mogo, similarly, we did that for crosswinds, so those conversations will still need to happen.
Okay, so I wasn't clear, it wasn't clear to me that they were unmitigable. It was just that they were above the Morgan Hill average.
So yes, that's correct, um, so within everything that's yellow or red, they're above the average. Um, any projects within the yellow parts of the map. They potentially could be reduced to a less than significant li- uh, level with the mitigation measures applied. Anything that was in red. Even with these mitigations applied, they still cannot, um, get to a less than significant level, so it would still require an EIR with overriding considerations.
Okay, and we're going to use the same kind of. What I call it. Point systems that certain mitigations can mitigate so much.
Correct.
Right, so the VTA has a model that says if you do this, you get so much credit. Reduction in your VMT per resident, right?
That's correct.
And then you go to the next one?
Yes.
Okay, do we have that point table for the mitigation list that we have?
Um. We have access to their, to the online, um. To the program, yes, um, um. I'll have to look and see what the point program is, but it's not. From the way, my understanding was is that's, um. Depending on what mitigation measures you use, there's only a certain level that you can get, even though there's certain percentages for each of these mitigation measures.
Right.
Um, Arthur might be able to explain it a little bit better than I can, um. But there's only a certain level that you can get to because of how the program is made, how, um. Some of these mitigation measures that you want to attain a certain amount of reduction.
You can only retain a certain amount of reduction, but if you only have to get to zero, you don't go. You don't have to get to fifteen percent below, it seems like more projects should be able to mitigate to zero.
Um. Well, that's what the maps reference when, or show with the bigger green areas within the city. And even though they're, they would be exempt, um, there's just more of the city is, or. More the city is less red because of that.
Okay, I'm done.
Um, I had a quick follow up, um, so when you say unmitigable, is that, that they can't achieve? Um I had a quick follow up. Um so when you say unmitigable, is that that they can't achieve zero? Or is it that they can't go beyond that fifteen percent or reach that fifteen percent?
It's that uh so the baseline is the twenty four vehicle miles traveled, the twenty four V M T. And so let's say a project is thirty two vehicle miles traveled. There's no way with all these mitigation measures that they can get down to that twenty four V M T per capita.
So they can do the entire list of, say, twenty and do every single one of those mitigations and just never be able to cross and get to that twenty four.
Correct.
And so, for example, if so, if there's a project right across one oh one, they're in the red. Um same layout, same everything, but there's another project right across one oh one. Again, same layout, same everything, but it's in the green. That project that's in the green wouldn't need to do necessarily any mitigations or can maybe do one. The project right across one oh one can do every single one on the list and still not achieve mitigation while the other one can.
Correct.
Interesting.
Okay, maybe you could clarify that by putting up that slide that shows the green, yellow and red.
Sure thing.
So, and when you start to answer that, are the green, yellow and red the same definitions we've been using since we started this transition?
Yes, it is.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so on that left map, those in green, which are now west of Monterey uh are don't require any uh C Q kind of clearance. In terms of uh V M T, the the ones in yellow uh may, but the option is that they uh choose an appropriate or you agree upon an appropriate action in the twenty four mitigation measures.
Correct.
Okay, and and the red are just kind of out of luck. They you you don't, no matter what you do, you're gonna have to uh do an E I R.
Correct.
Okay, with the caveat that there is now some other mystery kind of uh thing where you can get points.
That's not, that's not a mystery. That's the way it is right now today, using the V T A model.
A mystery to me.
Okay.
Okay, but that was, that was never mentioned that there is a way where you can get credits or points by doing something that allows you to, I guess, uh take some credit or get some kind of reduction for the V M T. Is is that sort of relevant? I think that we should be aware of um.
Yes, the we I bring that up a a while ago, maybe three years ago.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But yeah, so each mitigation measure um has a percentage assigned to on how much V M T it can reduce. And so that's what uh we're talking about, the point system. So there's a certain percentage that um is assigned for each of those to have a many number of mitigation measures or possible mitigation measures there are. Um so the areas and the and the yellow on this map on the one, the right side of this is approved. Uh depend on what mitigation measures they use or what they can use that's feasible. They potentially could reduce to a less than significant level, and as you mentioned, the ones in the red would be out of luck. They still have to um implement feasible mitigation measures, but they won't unfortunately not be able to reduce it to less than uh twenty four V M T per capita.
Okay, so you're saying the ones in red uh will not ultimately benefit from the uh V M T reduction list.
Oh, they they have to do some of the reduction list. It just will never get down there because unless we were to try to get into changing the weighting that's in this mitigation table, which I'm not sure I wanna go there, uh it just, you can't help it, right? So now I understand. I was not, it wasn't clear to me that we were using the same definition for red, yellow and green that we have been using. Okay.
Could you give one example of um that reduction, the V M T reduction, like what if somebody what is what is the action that they could take to get a reduction in the otherwise uh V M T number? Uh for example, thirty two, how?
Yeah, so for example, when uh you saw the Crosswinds project just uh last month. Um so they were in the red side of of this map, they're on the east side of one oh one. Um that they required an E I R to study it because the V M T, I believe, was around I think it was around twenty nine thirty V M T. Uh with the mitigation that was feasible for that area, they were only to able to reduce it down to twenty eight, I believe. Twenty eight V M T per capita, and there was nothing else that they could do in order to reduce it any further. So there was still um an E I R required because of that, um as well as for other um impacts agricultural, but for V M T there's just no way that they could reduce it down to twenty four.
The question was, could you give an example of what that would be, what did they? Bus passes.
Yeah, what did they do? So with that one, uh it was to provide V T A bus passes or to provide uh financial contribution towards M O G O through a T D M plan.
Aha.
And the the choice in which one will be implemented won't happen until the T D M plan is developed. So it's conditioned to develop the T D M plan and then a decision on what type of contribution would be required.
Okay, and and you're saying that that is different from the twenty, the list of twenty four that we have. Yeah, it it looks like it's the same list.
It is.
Oh, I I I thought I heard uh you say that it was
No, it's a table that gives you what credit you get for each of these mitigations.
For each of the twenty four.
Yeah, and that's the way you build it up, and when you looked at the table, you could only maybe take out two or three miles per gallon, or miles per resident in Morgan Hill. And as a result, you can't mitigate down enough because their numbers are so high.
Okay.
I, sorry, I went off in the deep end when I thought it was.
Uh could you, could you be so kind as such, provide the commissioners what that looks like, and you probably did three years ago, but I lost mine. I'm kidding, I don't remember. If you could, uh this said document would clarify for me what what that looks like.
Yes, we can share um the uh link uh and where they could play around with it.
Be great, okay.
Any other questions? Does somebody care to make a motion?
Yes, I will make a motion gladly. I make a motion that we
Read the title of the resolution.
Well, to adopt the resolution recommending the city council adopt the screening criteria and thresholds of significance regarding the city's implementation of state senate bill seven four three, S B seven forty three, which transitions from L O S, level of service. The V M T, vehicles, mice travel, as the metric for transportation analysis under C Q for development projects.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Jenna, would you call the roll?
Chairman Laire?
Yes.
Commissioners Tonda.
Hi.
Habib.
Hi.
Blake.
Hi.
Kumar.
Hi.
I'm Wilson.
Hi.
Motion passes six with one absent.
So now I believe director's report is next.
So at um the city council meeting last week, the city council approved the Crosswinds development that you recently saw. And also approved on first read the code change to the administrative office and that would allow vehicle uses in that zone. Um they did ask that we develop design guidelines. Um it was actually a very spirited discussion, and near the end of it, it was suggested that development guideline or design guidelines for any type of vehicle uses be developed prior to us receiving any application. So we are gonna be getting started on that, that will be coming back to you. Um and then go to council ideally before the second reading of the ordinance, which will happen sometime in August. T B D, um that's the plan right now. Um we, while council, that was the last meeting that council's having until we're back in session with them in August. However, we've got a lot of work for the commissioners, so we're not gonna be shutting down meetings over the summer. So if you do have summer vacations, please let me know, um so we can make sure that we're watching schedule and that we have a quorum. Um and those projects vary from um a discussion of the farm-based code work that we've been doing, that'll be coming back to you. Um to some individual projects, the Peak Amos Assisted Living Center that came to you and um that'll be coming back as well as we're looking for a date for Chick-fil-A to be coming to you as well. So that's all I have. Also happy to answer any questions.
Uh I have a question on the hotel status of that downtown.
Downtown, um they submitted uh for their fifth floor and work is continuing. They are on a a schedule um for having submissions done and work done at an appropriate timeframe. Um and they are meeting their dates that are required.
Uh do you have a projected opening day?
Um I do not know. I'm I'm gonna call, phone a friend. The Granada, or Mohai, yeah.
Um Jennifer, what about the art gallery right across the street?
That's going.
The art gallery right across.
Art gallery is maybe, I don't think we have an opening date. We do have a grand opening date.
Hi, good evening, uh Matt Mayhood, Economic Development Director. Uh the Eads Gallery, they have completed the interior framing and uh are now working on H V A, electrical and plumbing, and they are targeting a January, February, two thousand twenty four opening.
Oh, nice.
Targeting any delays.
It couldn't be done for the holiday season, that would have been super.
They wanted that, but not gonna make it.
Uh could you, do you happen to know, uh Matt, what's, what is going on on the middle school site? That there's quite a structure that's going up. Um wha- what is that structure?
Oh, uh Activity Center, it's under just under construction right now.
Okay.
I think the Student Activity Center. Yeah, but, yeah.
Oh, it's one, I think it's probably the biggest structure uh currently, part of the hotel opening up in Morgan Hill. And okay, so.
I'm sure you can go on the online and at the school industry and find.
I probably, you're right, but I, this is a reservoir.
One last thing I will add is we did get some excellent news today. Um H C D released their um S B thirty five list. Used to refer to it as the bad boy list. We are not on it currently. Um due to the housing production that we've achieved during uh the last year. So we are exempt from S B thirty five. We'll take it.
It is that really to the affordable housing, not the the housing element? Uh.
The housing element is still being worked on. Um we recently met with our new reviewer. We got a whole new set of reviewers. Um it took us about six weeks to get a meeting with them. Um and we went over their second comment letter, uh we're doing revisions, uh hope to have it resubmitted back to H C D um in the summer, and they get another sixty days to look at it and hopefully the reviewers will stay constant. Um we were a little disappointed that our reviewers changed.
Yeah, and probably a number of us had seen in the mercury, I think it was, where this headline, you know, nuclear provision uh being uh applied in Los Gatos or somewhere, or someplace like that.
That is the builder's remedy.
Ha- has that uh been brought up here in Morgan Hill?
Not officially. We've heard some folks speak about it. However, the city adopted our housing element in compliance with state code. Um and there might be some arguments from H C D about what that means, um because it's not certified yet. But we have um anyone who has brought up builder's remedy, not in official capacity um have has been told we will strenuously defend or vigorously defend um us from any builder's remedy case now. Hopefully, no one's listening and hears that as a dare, so.
And Jennifer, what was the builder's remedy?
Um builder's remedy is, uh do you wanna talk about it? It's um basically any city that does not have an adopted housing element or did not submit their housing element. Any um housing developer can come in on pretty much any piece of property and build beyond the zoning standards. Um and it's really not anywhere where we would wanna be, so.
It's with little to no oversight from the city. No C Q.
Okay, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you all.